A prayer from the Archbishop's of Canterbury and York, following the result of the EU referendum. Eternal God, light of the nations, in Christ you make all things new. Guide our nation in the coming days through the inspiration of your spirit, that understanding may put an end to discord and all bitterness. Give us grace to rebuild bonds of trust, that together we may work for the dignity and flourishing of all, through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. And so we pray for our meeting this evening, asking God's blessing on the discussions, and praying that all that we talk about, all that we hear, all that we decide, may be to the benefit of all, and not just the few. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I would ask you all to remain standing. We will now take a minute's silence for one of our own, councillor Jane Cribbin. Sorry. Okay, good evening everybody. We will now, we will now take apologies for absence.
Madam Mayor, we have apologies from councillors Croxton, Cubitt, Knight and Thompson.
Moving on. Number two, minutes of the meeting, Tuesday the 10th of May of council. Could we have permission to sign these as correct? Are there any declarations of interest, please? Next, questions from the public. To answer any questions received from members of the public, of which notice has been given under council procedure rule 13, are there any?
None have been received, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Number five, we now go on to adopt the meetings of, the reports of the following meetings. Minutes of the meeting on Wednesday the 25th of May, the regulatory board, and also, and also the 14th of June. Are we agreed?
Madam Mayor, I so move.
And a seconder? Okay. Minutes of the meeting of Monday the 6th of June, Cabinet.
Please to move, Madam Mayor, somebody will help me for a second here. Is that agreed?
Agreed. Thank you. Minutes of the meeting Thursday the 9th of June, of the overview scrutiny committee.
Please a second, Madam Mayor.
Agreed? Okay. Next is minutes of the meeting Thursday the 16th of June, of finance and audit. Minutes to follow.
Madam Mayor, before I move these for approval, I'd like to draw members' attention to the, to the, at the time of deposit. In fact, Madam Mayor, I'd please to move minutes.
Minutes agreed? Agreed. Okay. Okay. Reserved items, there are none. Okay. Right. To consider reports from officers of the council. And it's number seven on your agenda, which is the clock tower restoration scheme.
Madam Mayor, there's a recommendation in that report, and I asked the council to support it.
I have people who want to speak. Councillor Colin Callaghan.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think it's appropriate to take this opportunity to speak on this item. This item, most of us will know, came about, or the general work around the clock tower and the Milton Road area came, started in about 2013. This is the culmination really of a brainchild of someone we just stood a minute's silence to. Jane Cribbin. She, it was her, once she got re-elected to county council, she understood the, the generation of that end of town. She, she saw what was going on with using around clock tower area, and the dilapidated state that some of that area had started to look in. And as a consequence of that, she decided that she would like to use some of her KCC member fund in order to get that work done. And I think that, or to get some, something done there. And I think it's a testament to our borough councillors and county councillors, in their civic life and duties can contribute to the residents and the well-being of a town. And I think this is perhaps an apt time, a prime item to bring that up. Because it was her that started it with first off, understanding that the council already had a bit of money set by for that area, round the clock tower, and wanted to contribute from a member fund and get that matched by the borough council to bring that area up. It included other things other than just the clock tower, with signage, pavements, so on and so forth. To the extent she even persuaded me to put a somewhat smaller amount of my own member fund into it to, to boost the funds. So, I just think that this is a testament to the work, or some of the work that Jane Cribbin's done in her time as a councillor. I believe the officers will accept it was her original idea. This was the culmination of it. The lottery fund bid that eventually went in from 2013 onwards. And the only real shame is that she won't be here to see the culmination of what she started. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Burden?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I fully agree with the sentiments that councillor Callaghan just outlined in there. I also noticed that we're dealing with this, this particular item as a committee report, and as a recommendation, not as a motion. So, no doubt, members can come back with your agreement if we want to add any comments, because it is a report item. On that basis, I support the recommendation as set out. But I think the comments that Colin has just made about Jane need to be emphasised. She did do a lot of the work, and not the bulk of the work, to make sure this particular scheme came forward. It was during the last administration that we really started to investigate it and do it, and seek the funding from external sources. The fact that it's been successful and the council's gained, and the community's gained, is in large part due to Jane's tenacity in keeping on, to making sure that we didn't get off our agenda. There's one thing that almost constantly, Jane was solidly, almost every opportunity she had of talking to me about it, of wanting to know where we're getting on with the clock tower, why is it not moving quicker, why is it not being done yet? Why is not money to come in? Why aren't the councils doing more? She was constantly on the case about the clock tower. But I think the important thing is, it's not just the clock tower. It's not just the heritage of the clock tower that she was interested in. It was about the whole environment around that part of Gravestown. She was very keen to make sure that that part of Gravestown wasn't forgotten. Because over the years, we have tended to forget that part of Gravestown. It's a great shame, there are some fabulous buildings, fabulous shops there. And as the community, we have in the past dabbled. For example, we spent a lot of amount of money for the more older, senior, whatever sort of members you want to call us, I'm included, who may remember back to the good old days of, of the funding that came through from some of the plans that we had. When we did up Harmer Street, we did the balcony in Harmer Street, and all that work there. Loads of money was spent there, and we moved on. We seemed to have forgotten it. We spent some money and moved on. And that sort of activity by the council should stop. We need to prize parts of our town that we've got like this. And when we're spending money like this on a part of town, start thinking what else we can do in linking up strategies that we've got as a council, to make sure the community's there genuinely benefit from this as a pump priming thing going forward. Not just forgetting the shops and the residents there. So, we've done your clock tower, that's enough, isn't it surely? And then move on. That sort of activity's got to stop. We've got to get involved with the clock tower, we've got to help the community. There are various parts of our council, KCC and other government agencies that can get involved and work with us. We need to work with those agencies to make that part of town more vibrant and better for all our community. Because it is one of our gateways into the town. And that's something we sometimes forget. That if you come from the Easter Grey's End, you cannot fail but go past that part of Gravestown. And if you're coming through that way, and you see it rundown, dead, derelict, not quite the sort of place you want to be, why come to Gravestown? That's your image of Gravestown. That has got to stop, we've got to change that. And Jane's very keen, very, very keen, to stop that sort of slippage that we're constantly doing down the slope to nothing in that part of Gravestown. So we have to work together. It's not about one side or the other of the council that will make this happen. That will, that won't happen that way. We have to work together as a team to make sure that part of Gravestown benefit from anything else we can lever in to that area, to make sure that everybody, not just those residents and those businesses around the clock tower, benefit going forward, but the entire community of Gravestown. Because that's the way we need to move forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Burden. I'm sure we've listened to that very closely, and we'll all take that on board. Councillor Halpin, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I begin, I'm probably very emotional and angry and bitter in that kind of mood, because of recent events. You know I'm talking about the football, right? But anyway, the, what I'd like to start, I've been, I've been lobbied by the histor, the army of historians in this town, namely one, who wants to make a reminder that any fixture and fittings that are going to be done to the clock tower, that the lettering needs to be redone on the Victorian and Elizabeth portraiture, and that the electrics are in severe need of overhaul. So, that, that would be really good if that's in the minutes. But following on to the points that have already been made, I totally, I totally concur with Supercold and my leader John Burden in Jane, Jane Cribbin's contribution to this, to this project. And this, this clock tower has been, I'm a Northfleet lad, I've been born, I'm a born and bred Northfleet lad. And I've, every time I came into that town as a kid, it's been a fixture and fitting in my life. And I do love, and I've always loved that clock tower. But I'll also reveal to you that I also lived in that area for a very short time in my life. Might not be times, but hi, you know, that's the way it goes. But the thing is, is that I did live in the area, and one of the, and one of the things in that area is that it is at the epicentre of our diverse community. It, it's got wicked curry houses there, it's got wicked Turkish kebab shops there, it's got brilliant Chinese restaurant there. Curry Mecca is a place to go for, that's not an advertisement endorsement by the way, but, but you've got to remember that that clock tower is not just about a landmark for Gravesend, because this is about the Victorians in Gravesend. As you all know, or most of you should know, I am a Republican. And I do understand that the clock, the clock tower was built for the golden jubilee of Queen Victoria. I, I totally, I totally understand and concur with that. But we have to remember that the Victorians were also utilitarian in their, in their, in their manner and in their beliefs. And the thing is, is that if you're going to have a landmark, if you're going to have a landmark, let it do something, and it tells us the time. But the thing is, is that it also tells us about their time. It's a time when they are remembered. Because when you look in that time, from Victoria's reign from 1837 to 1901, it was a time when in human, in all spheres of human activity, we led the world. In trade, industry, engineering, the arts. These, these were, these were truly glorious times. I don't go with what councillor Cras was saying in April about a golden age of our own modern times. But I, and I certainly wouldn't call the Victorian Age golden. I would, I would call the Victorian Age an age of true progress. Because the, because the scar, being of Irish heritage, need I say more? Because that, those events in Ireland did happen. Child poverty was, was, was rampant in the Victorian Age. Terrible housing was rampant in the Victorian Age. But the thing is, is that, like I, like I say, that, that landmark registers a better time, a better period. A time when our country truly reached for the stars. And I tell you what, in this day and age, and in this time that we're in, that's something worth remembering.
Thank you, Councillor Halpin. Okay. Councillor Hurley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo councillor Colin Callaghan's comments and councillor John Burden's comments. And I listen with great interest to councillor Halpin's out of diet comments. I personally, and I'm sure all my colleagues are delighted to say that the refurbished, renovated and floodlit clock tower will always be a permanent reminder of councillor Jane Cribbin. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Hurley. Can I have councillor Milner, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to speak. I won't speak for very long because I agree with everybody that has spoken now. Except for, a big thank you to Jane for all that she's done in that area. I remember seeing plans with Colin and Jane of the area, and how beneficial it's going to be. It inspired me to knock on a few doors of the shopkeepers and the shop owners. And I went round with a petition from the council provided with to get some signatures on there in support of putting in for the bid. And when it's finished, it's going to look really great. And as councillor Burden has said, it is one way into the town and into our borough, and that will be very welcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Milner. Can I have councillor Rolls, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Some very interesting comments and an education for parts of this evening. Very, it's been very useful to hear the comments that have been made. And certainly I'd support everything about the work that Jane did for what is essentially in councillor Milner, councillor Croxton and my ward. My concern is, I'm sure that the clock tower will look amazing when it's finished. But in between times, we need to ensure that the clock tower's works, it doesn't look like an eyesore on the way into town. And I have written to the chief executive to highlight some concerns that residents in my ward have, and also businesses in the ward. Very grateful to councillor Halpin for listing some of those. But beyond the food establishments in Gravesend, there are some really important businesses down that end of town. And as a gateway into town, I do hope that it doesn't just look like a construction site for the length of time that it's going to take for the work to take place. So, I, I saw an example of some really good construction on the way through town earlier. With just putting yellow tyres on the side of the building opposite, the building works opposite Parry Street car park, and having plants growing out of them. It's just something small and simple to make it look nice. But a little bit more about explaining about how that project came about, I think would be useful. And, you know, I think it's important that as people come into the Riverside Ward, that it doesn't look like an eyesore going forward. So I do hope that the council take note of that and, and ensure that there's something done about the way that it looks at the moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Rolls. Can I have councillor Jassell, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I also echo the comments in relation to councillor Cribbin? The town centre initiative falls under my portfolio, and also business development within the borough falls under my portfolio. The town centre is quite key and paramount to that. And I know how much she actually cared about that part of town, and, and the rest of town for that matter. But we, we shared a lot of, a lot, a lot of ideas on what should happen going forward. And I, and councillor Burden's quite right, successive administrations have failed that part of town. Quite frankly, going back to when I was first elected in 2007, right up until now, we've kind of plastered over the real problems that, that lie in that area. And some of those problems lie in Harmer Street. And councillor Pritchard, and give a great deal of credit to him, and myself are actually trying to work out a number of schemes to get to the bottom of, of the problems down there. And I hope councillor Burden will support, support us in that. Because it's right, we do need cross-party support to get the town centre up and running and, and moving forward. But can I also agree with councillor Rolls in terms of the works there? A lot, a lot of businesses have contacted me, and some of the officers are in contact with the, with the group that are carrying out the works there. Because unfortunately, this is going to go right on through summer. It's going to have some impact on the Northfleet Festival as well, which has got to pass through there. And it's going to impact a lot of new businesses that have started up, and that's, that's something that we need to try and minimise. So, we are looking into that, and he's more than welcome to cc me into anything or any inquiries he has. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Anyone else would like to speak? Sorry. Councillor Shelbrook, and then councillor Wemben. I'm very sorry, councillor Wemben, I didn't realise.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I, I'd just like to concur with everything that's been said. And I think, having heard of that, I don't know if it's possible, but would it be possible to have a plaque affixed to the clock tower to, to just remember the work that Jane Cribbin put into getting it renewed? I'd also like to say that when I was a boy, back in the 1950s, my grandmother, who lived in Abbey Wood, used to bring me to Gravesend on the bus. And when I married and moved into Vigo, which then wasn't in Gravestown, the rural district was strewn in those days, we used to come down here to shop, of course. And I sadly said to my wife, this is where my grandmother brought me. Just the clock tower. Because we got off the bus, clock tower, walked through the gardens to promenade. So, it is a landmark, it should be renewed, and I think it's a tremendous memorial really to Jane Cribbin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Can we have councillor Wemben, please?
Right. Hello? Yeah. It's always been the central part of Gravesend, oh Gravesend life, actually. That was the parade spot for all the parades that went through Gravesend. Declarations of, of a new monarch was always done there. And it was the hub of Gravesend. And I'm, I'm really pleased that at long last, it's going to be brought back to its former glory. But also, I think, I may be wrong, but I, I think when John was in charge, didn't you have the lights put on the clock tower? And I must say that that went down really well, and people did notice it and remarked on how well that was. But it is a feature, and I'm glad we've all come together to appreciate it. And just before I go, I think the Victorians were the golden age.
Councillor Mackham Singh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to wish my sort of sentiments to councillor Jane Cribbin. It is a sort of, to her credit, we've done, have some sort of works initiated. But I think what we must understand, that in this chamber, we have always been united in investing in our town, making sure that we regenerate the area. We've been very, very united. And it's very wrong to attack any particular administration to say the particular area had been neglected. No, it had not been neglected. All the successive, successive administrations have done their best to make sure that area is brought up. And as Robert Halpin said, in his very articulate fashion, that we've got multicultural shops there, which we must encourage to flourish. It is unfortunate that the post office shut down, because that sort of reduced the flow, the flow of the people. But nevertheless, we've got the heritage quarter on board. And I'm sure that will also bring more added value to the areas like Queen Street and, and the surrounding area. And I'm really encouraged that we are spending this investment on, on our clock tower, which is, may I say, Queen Victoria is dear to me, because during her, if you like, empire, Maharaja Rishi Singh's, the only living prince, Maharaja Dilip Singh, was brought over here, and he was turned into Christian to initiate a start with. But when he grew up, went to see his mother, I'm sorry, it might not be relevant, but it is history. It is important to us, because Gravesend is a very storied town. And when he went to see his mother, realised that he'd come from a Sikh family. And then he grew his beard and turban, had the turban in his last days. And of course, you've seen, some of you probably have seen his graves in Elverdon. And the Sikhs have taken the opportunity to also sort of install his statue, which is in a place called Thetford. If you ever get a chance to visit that, please do. So I'm really encouraged again, and I'm really overwhelmed that we are all united to restore the clock tower and that area, and bring it into good use. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. I'll now ask councillor David Turner to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. My experience over the years is that just about every councillor in this chamber values the heritage of Gravesend, values the heritage of our borough. And Jane, as strongly as anyone. the heritage of Gravesend, values the heritage of our borough, and Jane as strongly as anyone. Since the nineteen fifties, when I first came down here on occasion to play cricket, the centre of gravity of the town has progressively moved west, and now, of course, the hub of the town is New Road. And this project is one element that shifts it more to the east, where it should rightfully be. But it's only one element, and as already been said, we need a strategy to do more to shift that centre of gravity. The market refurbishment is one element that may contribute to that, but there's much more that needs to be done. Perhaps down Harmer Street itself, a major strategy for that, but then beyond that, to the further to the east, to develop that, so that somehow, the whole focus of people when they come to Gravesend is the clock tower and that area of the town, and not down west, I wouldn't say utilitarian, if you like, but sort of, you know, the place that had to be developed in the fifties for a new town. So, clearly, I'm glad that everybody supports the project. I do hope that we can get together to think of a strategy, because it's not easy, you're talking about major, major investment, and that doesn't mean just through the council, someone's got to come in and put money down Harmer Street, but we've got to think of a strategy to develop Harmer Street, and to make the clock tower a focus, and everything around it new and vibrant. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now... Is the recommendation agreed? Thank you very much. To consider questions from members of the council, of which notice has been given under Council Procedure Rule fourteen.
None has been received, Madam Mayor.
We now come to appointments to committee, which obviously the Labour Group have been affected. So, Commissioner Lee Milner be appointed as Member of the Appointments Board. Are we agreed? And Commissioner Susan Howes be appointed as Member of the Regulatory Board. Right. The next is, I don't think there's any other business? Yeah, I'm going to do that. Right. I just have one announcement to make, and that is for Jane's memorial service. Lee has asked us to remind everybody that it is on Monday, the eleventh, and it is at St George's Church, and it is at eleven o'clock in the morning. I don't know what the dress code is, it doesn't say, but probably, John, he'll communicate with you, and you will let us know what we've, what he wants. Sorry? Clothes? I didn't want, I bought a new bikini. Right. I'm just being told there is a reception at the Civic Centre afterwards as well. So thank you all, for my first council meeting, and you've all played nicely, so thank you.